The room.
It does not look like it. Oh, I heard that. No? Where did IT go?
Unmuted. Okay, let's try that now.
Can you hear us now, Commissioner Ojero? Or anyone else on the meeting? I can hear myself, like, over the speaker, but...
Nancy, can you hear me in this direction?
I can't hear you.
Zan, can you hear me?
It's not just Zan, right? Like, other people can't hear us either? Like, who, Lynn? Lynn, you can't hear us, can you?
Yes, I can, I can hear Commissioner Wise.
Oh, great.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, you can hear me. Okay.
I wonder if Commissioner Ojero has a particular setting, maybe she can have her volume turned up on her computer?
Zan, can you hear me?
The what?
You cut out there, Zan.
Okay, it looks like she's gonna try to log back in.
Also, Maria, for mine, I am attached to the Wi-Fi, but it's not bringing me up. It's been like this for three to four minutes. And I don't have a connection for that.
I believe I can hear you.
Can you hear us?
In an echo chamber, yes.
It echoes?
Make sure your mic off on...
Off.
Maria, can you try it with Commissioner Ojero, just make sure she sets her...
Zan, you're saying you're getting some echoes on your end? You're getting double beep? But it's not double beep, it's just a very, very echoey sound, but I can, I can hear you. Okay, let's, let's keep going and see if we can... We need to adjust it down the road. We can maybe adjust the volume on this now. Yeah, good.
Well, I'm just curious if other people on, can hear us, you know, if everyone's having an issue hearing us. Lynn, how, how do we sound to you?
Yes, I can hear you. Commissioner Wise, you're, you're a little quieter than Zan, but I can, I can hear you, so it's, it's functional.
Okay, I'll try to speak up.
Looks like we have just maybe one more small technical difficulty we're working out. And then we'll get started shortly. Okay. Hey, Erica.
Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded. This conference is no longer being recorded.
Did you, I'm sorry, no, I didn't realize. Yeah. That's all you need now, is for your computer to start. Okay, I think we can go ahead and get started.
This conference will now be recorded.
One, thank you for your patience, and we apologize for the technical difficulties. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 9:10 a.m. Let's start with a round of introductions. I'm Nancy Wise, Chair in Benton County Commissioner. Zan?
Zan, the real commissioner.
Chair Kirby, County Administrator.
Eric Mylett, Board Recorder. And let's see, let's continue, people on the, on your, on your computer, please go ahead.
Johann Hidde, Pronouns Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator.
Lynn McKee, Director of Benton County Natural Areas, Parks and Events.
And then we do have some members in the audience, which do you want to introduce them? You want to shout out your name out there?
I'm Scott Snidderker.
I'm Dan Eddy, Deputy Fire Management Officer for the Southwest Oregonian Forests. Sayusla National Forester, Bureau of Land Management, Southwest Oregonian District. Indy Fraser, Supervisory Forester, Mary's Peak Field Office, BLM.
I'm Amanda Aitkins, Board Commissioners, Managing Assistant.
I'm Michelle Holman, I'm the District Ranger for the Central Coast Ranger District, and the Oregon Noons NRA for the Sayusla National Forest.
Welcome, everyone. All right, are there any announcements? We're even seeing none, we will move into comments from the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment for up to three minutes? We're even seeing none.
We'll move into review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
All right, I'll consider that approved. Let's move into the work session. First, we have our annual update from Bureau of Land Management and Sayusla National Forest. Please correct me on that pronunciation.
Is that making it? Usually Sayusla.
Sayusla.
Yeah, I can jump in if you, if that's, that's the way we want to do it.
Pardon me, one moment. So are we, will it maybe be presenting as well?
We don't have, we've already submitted a briefing paper for that Bureau of Land Management for this conversation. Hopefully, everybody has received it. Michelle, I think I'll do...
All right, I was just gonna say, if anyone else has a paper they had, then come up to the table, and not, we can just proceed, Michelle.
So I, no, I don't have anything to present. I mean, I have something to present, but not on the screen, so. And I can, there's some things coming out, like on our stewardship sale, that I can send to you, that's just in draft form right now. And that'll support kind of what I, what I talk about, so. So you want me to jump on, jump in? Yeah, okay. So as always, it's a pleasure to speak with the Benton County Commissioners, and it seems like we were just on here. I can't believe it's been almost a year ago, so. What I want to talk to you a little bit about today is the Mary's Peak Communication Site with Bonneville Power Administration. Wanted to update you on some Title II projects, because they were assigned, we had a rack this year that actually assigned money, and talk a little bit about what was assigned in Benton County. We have our stewardship projects from our retained receipts from our timber sales. And several projects were worked on this year, and then talk a little bit about kind of the fire piece of it, so. The Mary's Peak BPA Communication Site project. The BPA has finished their analysis, and they signed a decision. Their decision was to move their existing communication site up to adjacent to the National Forest System site up there, and to co-locate with us, and so they've signed their decision. You know, the Forest Service adopted that analysis and signed a draft decision to issue a permit for them to be in that site. The decision was objected to, primarily from folks who kind of want to see the agency move that communications, communication site off of the Mary's Peak. We've been through the objection period. We're ready to make a final decision. But we're waiting for concurrence from the Fish and Wildlife Service, so Bonneville Power Administration created the biological assessment for that project, and we are just waiting for concurrence for that. But they are intending to start that in the spring of 2023. Now, that data has changed around quite a bit, and so, but right now, we're landed on spring of 2023. It'll be nice to get that project underway. I think it's, we're at five and a half years for that analysis, and so it's gonna be really, really great to kind of get BPA into their new building and get moving forward with the implementation, so. So that's the Mary's Peak BPA piece of it.
Can I jump in for a second on that?
You bet. Yeah.
Is that much of an expansion of the footprint of the communications infrastructure on the peak, and how much time is that construction likely to take?
So it's, it's making the footprint smaller.
Smaller.
So the intent, the, the BPA will be moving the fence in to make a smaller footprint. And I'm not quite sure about how long it'll take, but it's, it shouldn't take very long to, you know, put up a little building and a, and a antenna. There's more lattice and stuff they have to build. There's some design work for the platform, basically the concrete structure that the, that the lattice, the tower will be on. There's some engineering work that still has to be done on that, but I think once that's all done, actually doing it won't take very long. I don't know how long that means, but.
Thank you.
Sure. So Title II projects, the Securial School dollars, Benton County, how about $69,000? That doesn't mean that other counties can't, we can't spend money in other counties from other counties, but Benton County received money for four projects. The City of Corvallis Public Works received about $3,200 to treat non-native, non-native invasive species along some roads, and to treat some small areas in the Corvallis watershed. Well, they're municipal forests, so. Then $5,000 was assigned to the Forest Service for dump site cleanup, and that is, that's just towing of abandoned vehicles, transfer station and hazard, you know, fees, hazardous materials removal. And that's, you know, we're getting a lot of, you know, trash dumping and abandoned vehicles, and strangely enough, abandoned boats actually out in the forest, so this is helping to, for us to pay to get rid of those. And actually, each of the counties, we were given $5,000 from each of the counties to do that, so that's really helpful to us in that program. The Mary's Peak Meadow Restoration is ongoing. We have a lot of money coming in from different places, and, and this is on BLM, Sayusla National Forest, and City of Corvallis lands. And that's removing invasive plant species and encouraging conifers, and that's also supporting our native plant propagation and planting native plants in the, in the meadows. And then the last one was road maintenance, and that was to, I think it's, I think that's to the county, I forgot to write it down, but that's 15 miles of road drainage and surface maintenance activities, $20,000. So those are the four projects that were assigned. Any questions on Securial Schools or Title II dollars?
Questions?
I've just a question about, you were able to reconstitute the RAC, and you have a full membership in our program, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, we were. It was, it was kind of this, all the forces came together at the same time, and we were able to, to hold a rack, and almost everyone was brand new to that process, and so we had some, like, training sessions, like, tell them, you know, this is, this is the function, and this is what we're asking you to do, and that kind of stuff, so, yeah. Yeah, it was great.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah.
And sorry for the acronym, folks. RAC is Resource Advisory Council.
So from our stewardship projects, based on the stewardship projects in, that were worked on this year, or this year in Benton County, there's an estimate based on multipliers and all that kind of stuff, that we, that 14 full type equivalency positions, jobs, were generated through our stewardship projects in Benton County, and that's based on a earned income of $604,000, based on kind of what was going on in Benton County with our stewardship program. We'll be coming out with an annual summary of, of our stewardship projects. That includes all the, all of our counties, including Benton County, so that's, I can forward that as soon as that's final. The funds generated from our 2021 stewardship timber sales to support, those support stewardship projects, 3.3 million was generated for on-forest projects, and $700,000 was generated to, you know, to go to off-forest projects, which is probably, I think that's the biggest year we've had, so that's really great news in terms of, you know, restoration out on the ground. So for projects that were already assigned, so they're off-year, so fiscal year 2021 is implemented in 2022, or can be. Retained receipts don't really have an ending, like, they don't, they're not specific to amount of time. But that's, it's, it's one-off. You don't get your money until the next year, so in 2021, there were, in 2022, there were several projects that were implemented. Aphrana, we spent about $66,000 on the West Point Mary's Peak Meadow. And then the Mary's, Mary's River Watershed Council worked a lot in Greasy Creek. They did knotweed control, they, you know, doing some planning, large wood placement for cutthroat trout habitat in Greasy Creek. There is also some Upper Mary's fish habitat, Phase 1, and then Greasy and Woods Creek knotweed control Phase 4, and so a lot of great work done in Benton County and in Mary's River watershed with stewardship dollars. So those are the big, you know, major projects going on in Benton County. We do have a couple timber sales that are ongoing. Most of what are timber sales that we're selling right now are in Lincoln County and in, in Lane County. And then we'll move into this county. I wanted to go into the fire program just a little bit, to let you know that we've been working hard to get us prepared and find firefighters, and I think we're in good shape for the, for the forest. We don't get a lot of lightning storms, but when we do, we seem to get them on Mary's Peak, and so have really good relationships with the local ODF, and, and I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're working on... And I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're working on preparedness. And Dan Eddy can talk about it a little bit more, but with all the rain we've had in May and June, you know, the fire risks or the fire predictions have gone down quite a bit, particularly for the coast. That's probably not a surprise. Now, we touched on the homeless, homeless issues last year for, for just, you know, just a little bit. And to be honest, the homeless issues in Benton County seem to be relatively low compared to other counties. That doesn't mean it's not a big issue. It's just is not as big in other counties for, for the Sayuslaw. And that's, 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 that's a good thing. We did have, I know, one specific relatively large homeless camp at the base of Mary's Peak that is no longer there, so. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much the updates I have. I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that, to give a special thanks to the Benton County Sheriff's Office for all their help and support. They do a really good job, and they're easy to work with, they're supportive, and I just can't express to you how, how much of a pleasure it is to work with those folks. And I wanted to make sure everyone knows that. And, yeah, so, and I hope everyone knows that if you ever need anything from the Forest Service or have a question or anything like that, you are always welcome to call me. And so, and that's all I had for updates.
Thank you, Michelle.
Sheriff wanted to join us today, but he is on another meeting. So, we will pass along your thanks. And fun fact, it's also Sheriff and Arzdal's birthday today, so if you see him, tell him happy birthday. All right, other questions or comments? Commissioner Ogier, anything from you?
No, I think I asked my questions earlier, or excuse me. Or the raspy voice. And I, it sounds like all was going fairly well, given the complexity of life these days.
Yes, thank you very much. I really appreciate the info and appreciate you all taking the time to be here today. All right, any other comments, questions on this agenda topic before we move on?
Commissioner, purpose for clarification. I think it might be good for the folks that are visiting to review their written report with the board.
Okay.
The board does have your written reports. We do have Christine Greklov from Visit Corvallis, who won't be joining us until 9:45 or 10:00.
Okay.
Are you folks comfortable coming forward?
Yeah, we're ready. Just wanted, didn't want to step in until you guys were ready.
Oh, no, please go ahead. I was trying to pull it up on my iPad, which is also having some difficulties, so.
Commissioners, thank you for inviting the BLM today. I presented, provided, well, we provided a briefing paper, and so hopefully you guys have had a chance to take a look at it. Get myself, area out of the camera, remember my real sets. So, unfortunately, Paul Teigen is unable to make it today. He actually has separated from federal service and has gone to work for a contracting organization, or working for the federal government in another angle. So, he is, his last day was, is technically the end of this week, but he is not working this week. So, he has been seven years with us as the field manager in Mary's Peak, and we're sorry to see him go, so I just want to put that on the record so that if he ever sees it, he says, he knows that I said it. With that, I have a couple of people in with me today. Andy Frazier introduced, and Dan Eddy introduced themselves earlier. And as Michelle alluded to, Dan, if we have any questions about fires, available to answer that for you guys. Andy, if you have any questions about our timber program and much of our road stuff, he's also available to help answer any questions today. With that, I wanted to present some of the project activities that we're doing currently in plan. The Ridge View Overlook Project, technically, it's a little confusing name, and for those who might know some historic parlance, the area actually was also sometimes described as the Lady Bird Johnson View. However, based on our reviews, we're unable to figure out how it got its name for Lady Bird Johnson, so we are orienting towards using the word Ridge View Overlook, because we seem to feel that was a more appropriate terminology. The Ridge View Overlook is about two and a half miles up from the junction with Highway 34. It's a view shed point that you can actually see into the Cascades as well as into the west side of the Pacific or coast range. We've been asked a number of times over the last 15 to 20 years if the BLM could do something to improve the view shed there, until the current plan, we were unable to do anything under our new 2016 RMP. We were, had more flexibility to do something. And with the Mary's Peak Alliance approaching us, asking if we were able to do something, we said, sure, we can approach this. So, we've proposed doing a project in there, treating about three acres. It'll primarily be for wildlife benefit. It is right up next to the pullout, so it'll be very visible, which is some of the reasons why we've made efforts to make outreach as much as possible. We posted a press release and flash alert. We've actually sent emails to a couple of people here in the county on it, as well as a variety of other municipal organizations. The project will do a lot of benefits for wildlife habitat, and then it has an ancillary benefit for aquatic habitat as well. There's about 120 trees at the site that are of a decent size, 20-inch diameter or so, that we're going to truck over to the Milk Creek area just west of the old Alsea Forest Service office building and put those trees in the stream there as a partnership project with the Forest Service. And it's, I believe, there's some of the funding is going to come through their stewardship program for that. So, the combination of work of getting, improving the view shed, improving the wildlife habitat, and creating aquatic habitat benefit seemed like a fantastic threefer. So, we would, we were going for it. So, that should occur, that activity should start in July, depending on contracting issues. So, that's the, one of those fun activities that is going to be occurring this summer. And connected with that project, we also have another project over on Maxfield Creek, which also is in Benton County. That's, if you were to go to our e-planning site, you would find the project is described as the Maxfield Creek and Milk Creek Large Woody Debris Restoration Project. Maxfield Creek is going to also be current probably this fall. It's a collaborative project with the Lucky Mea Watershed Council. Then we have another project. Michelle mentioned the Secure Rural Schools. I didn't get in detail on Secure Rural Schools projects that the BLM has, has received support for, through the Resource Advisory Committee and through our, approved through the, I can't remember the term, the federal officer who approved the budgets. But I did include Bummer Creek Tributary Restoration. That's in the Bummer Creek area also in the Alsea. We have, we received a support through Secure Rural Schools for that project. It's going to be placed, doing a variety of things on private lands that are going to be to the public lands benefit. We're putting some trees in the stream to do some habitat restoration. We're also removing a barrier culvert and restoring fish passage in that system. The Benton County was sought and approved Title II funds for that to the tune of about $50,000. So, those are the two. We have a few other restoration activities. We have a few other small assistance agreements that are going on within the county, but that's the main stuff I wanted to talk about for restoration projects. Is there any questions relative to those activities? I have more on recreation and timber, but I didn't want to just keep rolling unless, and miss an opportunity for questions. And seeing commissioners were just nodding, I will continue on. We continue to have lots of activities at the Alsea Falls Campground and Day Use Area. We're working towards improving the day use area to include some camping activities. I didn't, that's not noted in the, in the briefing, but that's something that we are working on. In addition, the Fall Creek Mountain Bike Area, super popular, busy every weekend. Any major activities, definitely very much enjoyed by the public. The campgrounds are full every weekend during the summer months, and it's usually fairly active throughout the whole week. The project area is currently based on our 2015 Resource Recreation Area Management Plan. The ramp is fully built out. There's about 13 miles of trails in that area. And people have definitely been enjoying it as we're going through the pandemic. With that, I actually would want to roll it over. Andy, if you want to come up and speak, I'm going to start beginning talking about timber sales and.
Yeah, so in, so timber sale program for the BLM in Benton County. Currently, we have one active sale in Benton County called Beady Rider LSR Treatment. It's just a mile west of the town of Alsea. The contract sold for $1.4 million, and that sold in 2020 and should be wrapped up this year. It was bought by Timber Murphy Company, or, yeah, Murphy Company. And they're actually, their road builder was Alsea Corries, which was a local business, so. And then our future planning in Benton County for the next three to five years is our Aloha Trout Planning Area. We're just starting the on-the-ground preliminary look at, but that'll be starting up with sales coming, starting in about 2025. And that one is actually just east of Alsea on Honey Grove Road. And, yeah, that's really kind of, that's our, actually, the one that wasn't put on here actually is also our North 126 Sales, which were in conjunction with our Site Use Law Field Office in BLM. And so, we have, that's in the Lobster Valley area. So, part of those are in Benton County, which are scheduled for sale in next fiscal year, 2023, for the first one moving out about four to five years after that, so. So, I guess overall, the next three to five years, we should have at least one to two timber sales in Benton County. That's all I had, any questions?
Questions or comments?
It sounds like the sales are a little bit slow, but steady. Is that, reading that right?
Slow but steady, yeah. The Labor Day fires of 2020 put a, shifted, I guess, our, where we were at. So, Mary's Peak, our Mary's Peak Field Office, we ended up helping our Cascade Field Office salvage all of the, fire salvage, and we're still continuing to do that. And so, we started that in January of 2021, and we've been continuing to put up sales over there for them. And so, we are slowly working our way back into the Mary's Peak Field Office. So, they will pick back up in the next year, for sure.
And markets are good, so bidding is high?
Markets currently are very good, yes, very good. So, bidding, yeah, there's bidding wars. We had the last auction that we did, which was all fire salvage. There was seven bidders in the room. So, yeah, very good. It's a very good time right now.
Okay. And just again, in terms of acronyms, LSR is Late Successional Reserve under the Northwest Forest Plan. There's a lot of lingo, right?
Lingo, yeah, LSR, yep, is Late Successional Reserve. Our Aloha Trout area is what we call Harvest Land Base, so not LSR, which is HLV. So, yes, lots of, lots of acronyms.
Yeah, I keep a clarification, Commissioner Ogier. The acronyms are a curse of the federal government.
It's every sector.
So, is there any, since we have Dan Eddy here, is there any questions about fire that you are interested in asking?
We've been, as you know, very interested, just because of the 2020 Labor Day fires and everyone's heightened alert and interest. I think that we had ODF and a variety of folks come in just a month ago and had a pretty good presentation and update on fire readiness and on local readiness. So, I think that we're pretty, we know you all are collaborating a lot and that there's a lot going on at the state level within, in terms of implementation of the new wildfire legislation. So, unless there's something you want to tell us about how you see the new risk mapping evolving or your comments on the new state approach, we're probably fine.
Come on, Dan. So, as far as the state approach, still evaluating that, you know, working in cooperation with folks as, as that rolls out, and then seeing how the federal pieces will combine with that with, you know, funding that we have from the Infrastructure Bill and potentials that are, that are coming out from there, looking at our opportunities. I believe I saw a message yesterday that the wildfire risk map will be out today or tomorrow. So, yeah, really interested in seeing that and seeing how we can use that to identify potential, you know, fuels treatments in the future, opportunities out there that we may work together on. I would hit, you know, Michelle mentioned it, said you had a brief already, but, yeah, the weather conditions that we've had in the last month or so have been relieving, you know, after years of drought and then a dry winter kind of rolling into, into the season here, having the last couple of months of rain has really kind of put us back to what we would consider an average. Our fuel moisters and such are back into what is considered average. So, looking forward to a slow start to fire season and, you know, hopefully a period of where we don't have resistance to control fires for quite a while and maybe even an opportunity for less public use restrictions this year and let folks enjoy their public lands, which a lot of folks are out there over the last couple of years, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions from all of you out there? Nope, okay. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your time and sharing all that great information with us. And with that, we can move on to the next agenda item, I believe. All right. Next item is an update from Visit Corvallis, and we have Christina with us. All right, welcome, Christina. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for joining us today.
Oh, thank you for having me. It's been a while since we've seen one another in person and like the new place where you can give presentations, so looks great. Thank you for giving me some time today. For those in the audience who don't know me, I'm Christina Reckla and I'm the Executive Director of Visit Corvallis. And I'm here to just give a quick update on just what has happened as I'm going to flip over here to the next slide, maybe. Okay, all right. As the last time I presented to the commissioners, it was June of 2019 and a few things have happened since 2019. So kind of going to give a quick update. The way I put together my presentation is where we've been, where we currently are and where we're going next. So since we met last, I outlined some of the project work that we have done. We actually, as an organization, the pandemic hit at a fairly decent time for us just because of the fact that we were involved with a lot of project work that we continued on during the pandemic. We were able to make payroll cuts so that I didn't have to lay off any of my staff. And we were able to continue on with different project work. Just as the pandemic was breaking, we were just putting the finishing touches on our Mid Willamette Food Trail, which involves about 52 different businesses here locally that source local foods. They include restaurants as well as farms and other agritourism related businesses. The great thing about being in this particular program is it's a Travel Oregon program. And why that's important is because those partners that are part of that program get first bids on opportunities that I, at Visit Corvallis, may not be able to afford to give them. A perfect example is when the pandemic broke, Travel Oregon reached out to all of their food trails and we had the opportunity to include all of our partners that needed help, what kind of ways people could support them. And if you're not in that program, you were not offered that opportunity. So that's why sometimes like with the food trail, looking at it from the outside, you're like, well, this is a brochure and it's a marketing tool and it is that, but it also allows a lot of these opportunities that you may not see. The other thing, some of the other projects that we finished was there's a scenic byway, which is Mary's Peak to Pacific Scenic Byway. There was a program or a project that Travel Oregon actually funded it and ODOT funded it. And it is a travel app that you can download onto your phone and then it allows you, as you're driving along the scenic byway, to have a narrative that's given to you. So it talks some of the history and some of the things that you're looking at. I'm very interested in the new viewpoint as that may be something that we call out in this particular project. And if you download it, you might think that that voice sounds somewhat familiar as our own Kate Portia narrated that particular narrative for us from that standpoint. The other items that we finished was we had received a Travel Oregon grant prior, just before the pandemic, to do visitor research. So we weren't doing a lot of marketing during the pandemic. We found ourselves in kind of an unusual situation as the entity that's supposed to encourage visitation, to be telling people, please don't visit and please don't travel. So during that time, we did some visitor research and looking at the different assets as to why people came, what those types of people looked like. Some of the interesting findings that we found out is a lot of times Corvallis is associated a lot with OSU. And we know that a lot of our visitation comes from OSU. But it was interesting when we were looking at the people who order our visitor guide and actually visit our website, that they're not as interested or as likely to engage with OSU. So that was kind of an interesting finding because we get a lot of pressure sometimes that we should have OSU on our cover, but that's kind of a disconnect with the people who are actually requesting it. This then was sort of a precursor to our rebranding. So today I brought a little bit of merchandise and I have some stickers that I'm going to leave with the staff. Hopefully that doesn't violate any, they're only worth $2 at the very most, so hopefully that falls within the threshold. But this, some of, some of the hats that we created from doing the rebrand, I will say, we actually ended up using the same company that Benton County used for their rebrand, which is MAC. They did a great job in that I told them I wanted something that was an unusual and remarkable font, but something that didn't have any kind of iconic image with it because sometimes we promote downtown or the courthouse or something of that nature. But then we also turn around and promote things like Mary's Peak and outdoor recreation and we didn't want any kind of conflicting messaging. Also, it makes it great for merchandising because we have sort of our memorable and identical font that we can then drop the visit off of it. Sometimes we drop the Oregon off of it. So we've been really pleased with how that turned out as well as we changed some of our coloring to make it a little more subtle. And then finally, the other sort of bigger project that we did is we moved where we have our visitor center. So we were in the Chamber Office since about 2013. Part of the reason why that original move was, was because of people thinking, not really understanding that there's a visitor bureau as well as a chamber and so putting those together. So it's more of a sort of one stop shop and that. However, this is not 1996 anymore or even 1973 and people don't necessarily go out of their way to visit a Chamber building or a visitor center. So we moved it into downtown. We have probably tripled the amount of people that walk into the visitor center because they've been hanging, our visitors have been in downtown all of this time. It's just that they weren't visible to them, you know, with the chamber being where it's located. It's great if you're driving into town, but if you're not even thinking you need a visitor center, you're not going to stop there. And I will say, we have drastically improved the shopping experience in downtown as we are the most popular public restroom in downtown. From that standpoint, a lot of retailers actually have been thrilled that we have moved in because we are conveniently located from that particular standpoint. And then finally, the other thing that sort of changed, and this was partly accelerated by the pandemic. Again, as I talked, we were very much encouraged and instructed not to encourage visitation during the pandemic. However, we did want to sort of stay top of mind with people, so we put a lot more emphasis on PR. And part of that was just due to, A, we can quickly change the message. We can also dial it down and dial it up depending on case counts and other things. So that has actually been something that we have continued even as we have been coming to whatever this next stage of this pandemic is. And we found it to be very helpful because it's starting to get us into markets that we weren't in before. And I'm a huge believer in PR in that, yes, we can do our own self-promotion, but it has a lot more weight if you can get somebody else to talk about you. And it also gives us some indications about what people are interested in too. So it's kind of a, it's a win-win on both sides. So that's kind of where we have been and what we've been doing since the last time I saw you in June. So current situation and, you know, I do, the county has a 3% tax on the hotels, so I thought I'd give you a little bit of information about how they're doing. I know in the packet was included my quarterly update, but pretty much revenue came back in June of 2021. And I will say, I have a lot of compassion for my lodging properties because pretty much it just automatically came back in June. Pretty much leading up to May, sales were still or demand was still slow. And then in June, it was like suddenly a tidal wave happened and it was like, what is there a different, what pandemic was there? The other thing too is, I will just say also in this year, since February of this year, we have seen a remarkable amount of demand and return to revenue that is even higher than where we were in 2019. I do expect that to stay strong through September. We have the World Championships coming up here in the next month. September usually tends to be one of our stronger months. I'm not sure how August will necessarily play out. But then, then I am concerned about recessions and even where this inflation is taking us. The good news is if we do end up going into recession with our market mix, we're actually usually do better than some of our competitors in that particular standpoint. So that's why I feel pretty good through the end of September and then your guess is as good as my guess at that point. As far as current projects that we have going on, we are putting the finishing, we just approved and it has been sent to the printer, our Heart of the Valley Adventure Map. So what this is, is this is again, a partnership between Visit Corvallis, our regional partner, the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, or affectionately known as WAVA, and Travel Oregon. What I wanted to do is, since I arrived in 2018, I've kind of been learning the destination that I have here as I was new to Oregon at that time. A lot of our emphasis early on was on agritourism, culinary, that particular piece. However, we live in the state of Oregon and in order to succeed in Oregon, especially in tourism realm, you need sort of that point of differentiation from an outdoor adventure piece. So something that I had talked to with our regional partners was just that that was an area I had yet to sort of form a lot of relationships. And so that's what spearheaded our Heart of the Valley Adventure Map. So I got to learn some of our outdoor recreation partners better. Also, I got funding from the regional office as well as Travel Oregon pitched in some funds to cover the printing. So we will end up at the end of this, probably about a $12,000 to $13,000 project that cost me out of my pocket about $1,500, if that. So those will be available, we're hoping, here in the next month. We would like to try to have them ready to go in time for the World Athletics Championships or Oregon '22. Those people will start to arrive probably in mid-July as it kicks off on the 15th. The good news is, is that we will, most of our hotels, if they haven't sold out, they will probably end up selling out during those two weeks just from compression of you can't really get a room in Eugene at the moment, so that will push north. I will say, my salesperson is so happy that this is almost done because she's been working on this for two years. So she did a lot of work with some of the local tracks to get them in the bid book. We talked to various different athletic groups that will be, that were considering Corvallis. I'm happy to say, we did end up with the UK team as they will be coming in the first April of July and they'll be staying at the Hilton and doing their training at the OSU track. So the other, the bad news about, I will say, the World Athletic Championships, so there's been a lot of push about that there are thousands of people coming to Oregon and that is true. I don't know whether our restaurants and retail will necessarily see that just because they're sleeping here, they're going to Eugene. There are a few days where they have some time that they can explore. And so we have given information to our restaurants as well as our hotels about different options that they can suggest, but we'll have to see. But the good news is that also will mean probably less tax on our services while we get that revenue from the TLT. And then the final sort of current, larger current project that we're working on is the Oregon Senior Games. So this is an event that Visit Corvallis inherited from Visit Bend several, like probably in 2018 was when that transfer was actually made. We didn't get to do it in 2020. We did it in 2021. We had about 375 athletes that participated. We do this in August because that's a slower time for both our lodging and our venues. We, I'm happy to say, we are doing it again this year and we, the last time you, I think we have around 495 athletes. So our original goal was 550. We should be able to go past that, so we're really excited about that, to have that doing at this coming month or two. As far as future plans, where we're at at the moment is, this year was when we needed to redo our three-year strategic plan. So that's actually something that we just kicked off last week. You all will probably be receiving a survey, asking you a variety of different questions about things that you would like to see done differently, things that you feel are a need, not only with our organization, but with the destination as a whole. What we're doing too is one of the big sort of discussion points is tourism in the past, for the most part, has always sat in more of a promotional role. The discussion industry-wise, and we're having it as Visit Corvallis as well, is where do, what is our role in what we call product development? And I will say, product development is a very broad term. It can be, product development can be something as simple as this brochure that I have with me, which is a scavenger hunt using our murals from downtown. It can be something as complex as we're going to work on creating the Willamette Valley or the Willamette River and making that a trail. And we're going to work on helping, you know, inputs into the river, lockers for places, for people to put their kayaks in. And so one of the things that we're looking at just in our strategic planning and in this product development realm is we're a mighty army of four people. We, some people look at our budget and say, oh my goodness, you have so much money. Some people look at our budget and say, you have no money. And so we're trying to kind of have those conversations as we go through the strategic planning of like, what is our role? What is realistic? What is manageable for our organization? So we probably, in the next sort of updates, will be a little quieter on just different projects we're working on because we're really taking probably about three months here to really just talk about and put everything on the table and say, what do we actually want to look like moving forward five, 10, 15 years down the road? You'll be happy, I'm almost done. I have one last slide. So Joe, you'll appreciate this slide because during the pandemic, you had asked me at one point, like, you know, to let you know what, what the county could do as far as help for us. So I thought about that before I came and tried to come up with some answers that I felt were easier for you to say yes to and also probably are things that don't necessarily get brought up, such as, I don't need to talk about that we need affordable housing because that is an ongoing discussion. But these were several things that I tried to pick that I thought could be said yes to or that you could at least consider as you're moving forward. I believe that you had taken your ARPA funds and divided those into three different sort of rounds. The one thing I would just encourage is to always start, even though we are getting further and further from the economic strains of the pandemic. further and further from the economic strains of the pandemic, to still think about those organizations that didn't receive PPP or the IDOL funds, either through system problems, like I'm going to use Fall Festival as an example, they're not, they are not a 501(c)(3). They got locked out of a lot of programs. I have a tour operator who, as you are thinking about doing, redoing the facilities out at the fairgrounds, if you are serious about getting into conferences and meetings, you're going to need transportation. Well, our only transportation company here locally started in 2019. She didn't have quite enough to get into some of these PPP and these IDOL pieces, so that's been a huge strain on her, and she's had to dial back. So I would say also, I believe that you also had, or it had been approved, some smaller loans that could be given to businesses in this last round, and that's awesome. I immediately asked Kate Porche, I said, so what about nonprofits that didn't qualify or could have been affected by the pandemic? Well, those didn't make it in, so I would encourage to think about those particular organizations. I will say even Visit Corvallis, we got locked out of $62,000 simply because of the way we're paid by the city. So I would encourage, if you can do anything about that, that would be great. Again, I know Kate has in her strategic plan, supporting agritourism. The picture you see here is of Gathering Together Farm. We called this our magical photo at Visit Corvallis because every time we ever run this on social media, we get more engagement from that than pretty much anything else. And we also had this photo on our restaurant page, and we got more phone calls about, what is that restaurant on your restaurant page? So that's actually why we started to put our businesses and locations on our website. But that's actually a conversation that Visit Corvallis will start to be getting into because I also know Kate, her office is also very small, and they are down a person. So she and I are meeting this next week to kind of talk about, how can we help? I'm blessed, I have Scotty Jones on my board, so agritourism is always top of mind. So I would say just to keep those conversations moving forward. Same thing with downtown, with the DCA dissolving, we at Visit Corvallis are trying to do as much as we can do to support Simon as he takes over some of those roles. And then I know Kate has expressed interest in whether Main Street programming could be continued through her office. I would just echo whatever we can do as community to support those initiatives. I would love to see that continue. And then the final thing I would just say is, as we're doing some of the strategic planning and some of the product development works, we may end up showing up in new conversations that we weren't in before. I will say, especially like outdoor recreation, that's something that we are, A, it's relatively new for us to be getting into that conversation, as I don't know that we've been as heavily involved in it in recent years. But to just consider, to keep us in those conversations, it's been great to have Lynn on our board as that sometimes helps make those connections for her as well as us. And that is all. So thank you so much for your time and letting me talk a little bit about an update, and I'm going to open it up to any questions that any of you have. All right, thank you.
Questions or comments for Christina?
Well, thank you. I do read your updates when they come across my desk, and as the lead's on to the Corvallis Chamber, I hear occasional updates, but it's great to hear this larger perspective and sense of future planning. And I, I think you all, with your small and mighty group, have done a good job. I feel like we are more visible, and more visible for more than just Oregon State University. And I love the emphasis on bringing in the outdoor recreation as well. And that you've just done a great job with partnerships and leveraging funds from others, so love to see that continue. And as you know, the agritourism issues require the assistance of our Community Development Office, which has been swamped and understaffed at the moment. So we, I'm still very interested in them and further development and exploration of what we can do, but it's going to take some patience, and I think the more conversation we have about it in advance, then the easier it will be when it gets to the Community Development Department.
And one thing, Zain, I will want to say, something I didn't touch on. One of the things I'm most proud of with just even our outreach is, when I first arrived, I don't think a lot of people were aware of WAVA grants as well as Travel Oregon grants. So that's something that we've been working hard to educate. When I first came, the first year, no one applied for WAVA grants. And then the last year before, we didn't do grants this past time because also, just like the rest of the world, WAVA was short-staffed and couldn't handle like doing a grants program. But we went from zero to six in one year of just educating people on the grants. And then I try to also work with our partners to review the grants so that the best grants are put available, are put forward.
Service, that technical assistance is always needed for some of our smaller entrepreneurial businesses that just don't have the know-how to access some of those funds.
All right, other comments or questions? Well, Christina?
I was just going to make a quick comment, that I've been on the board for about three years, and I just want to give big kudos to Christina. She's done an amazing job in the time she's been there, and she did incredible during the pivot, during COVID, to keep us afloat during that time. And, and you know, I'm excited to dive into the strategic planning that we've just started and see where we're going forward. But anyway, I think just, just wanted to make sure that she, she knows how much she's appreciated by the board members.
Thank you, Lynn. I appreciate having you on my board.
Yes, thank you, Christina. We really appreciate all the work that your organization does. Please pass along our thanks to your staff, and thank you so much for coming today and giving us all this good information. I really appreciate the list of, you know, what we can do to help. That's, that's helpful. So yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this agenda topic before we move on? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Christina.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring us into our business meeting, which we have information sharing on. And I, there's nothing that I really have that's burning that I need to share at this time, so Commissioner Oger, I believe you had something, I think I heard, that you wanted to talk about?
I wanted to bring up the request that we received from the ABC House based in Albany that provides services to children who have suffered sexual abuse in Benton and Lynn Counties. They are seeking sponsorship for a run that they're holding for the first time, as I understand it here on the Benton side, and was wanting to know whether or not we as a board are interested in making a contribution from our board fund as a sponsor. Levels, sponsorship levels are highly variable, the ones they pre-designed, ranging from $600 as a guardian all the way up to $5,000 as a hero. I don't have a preference in terms of the contribution level, but I would be happy to contribute to support this important resource for our two communities.
Yes, also would support making a contribution. I think, you know, they should, they provide a valuable service for our community, and the more that we can support each other in our community, I think the better. So I'm open to amounts. It looks like in April, we did the $600 option. So I'm open to that or other?
Looking at the promotional side of it, if we do contribute $1,200, our logo is on all of the participant t-shirts for the event. And just in terms of a brand or name recognition, that one looks a little bit better than the $600 level. That's my, my gut instinct.
Sure, if you would like to make the motion, I think that'd be good, or go ahead.
I would move that we contribute $1,200 to support the ABC House superhero fun run and walk to be held here in Benton County and to support the work of the organization.
I will second the motion. Before I call for the voters, are there any comments?
No comments.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we did not specify where that money would be coming.
Commissioners, I'll work with Maura and with the Commissioner's budget, and we'll figure that out.
Perfect.
Also, contact ABC House and let them know to send us a invoice, is typically how we go about paying those, and so I'll go ahead and take it from here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Joe, there was a time when we were receiving quarterly updates on the Commissioner's budget that fell by the wayside during COVID. It would be great to reinstate that so that we can have a sense of how we're spending down the board budget.
You've been happy to reinstate that. Maura and I are now meeting monthly with Finance to review the status of our budget as well, so we can certainly bring that information forward quarterly to the board.
Thank you. Aside from that, I guess Nancy, the only other update I have is that I did meet yesterday with Representative David Gomburg, and I have meetings with Senator Gelson Blon and with Representative Brayfield this week as well. So I'm meeting each of them to brief them on the current status of the Justice System Improvement Program to let them know about where we are with respect to solid waste issues and the Oregon consensus process, and to answer any other questions they have for us, as well as to hear what's top of mind and what they're hearing from market constituents. And as, you wouldn't be surprised to hear Representative Gomburg's list at all. It's the usual list of housing, affordability, public safety, transportation, interestingly, and then workforce. Just staffing remains an issue for everyone, so plenty to work on.
Very good.
Thank you for doing that. Any other, any other info you'd like to share, Commissioner Oger?
Not at this time. I'm looking forward to that for recovery in the next few weeks.
Yes, we wish you a speedy recovery. All right, that brings us to Joe Kirby, our county administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Number one, I want to apologize for our technical challenges. We're certainly, certainly improving. We only started 10 minutes late this morning, but that is still not acceptable. So I know that staff, as of next week, at your July 5th board meeting, will be utilizing two pieces of technology that we're not used to utilizing. One of those is called the OWL device. Lynn McKee, if she's still on the line, will smile because this is a device that we tested out at the Fair Board Meeting about a month ago. We actually have it here in our boardroom this morning and are testing it as part of our meeting this morning. We will use it again July 5th, next Tuesday. In addition to that, next Tuesday, we will be migrating to the Zoom platform and migrating away from GoToMeeting. There's a number of reasons for that. One of those reasons is to stabilize, if you will, our platform, as well as to allow it, it will be more accessible to folks that have disabilities, and so it's a lot more of an accessible platform. So we are migrating the board meetings to Zoom starting next week. We will continue to use GoToMeeting for our internal organizational needs for the foreseeable future. As you're aware, we will be migrating to a new office suite towards the end of the year, beginning of the following year, and when we do that, we will likely transition ultimately to Teams, but at least for the next six months, we will begin using the Zoom platform. And that is the only update that I have for the board this morning.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing and seeing none, we can adjourn the meeting at 10:21 a.m. Thank you, everyone, and have a great day.